Call of Great York City, may you be your, but please rise to the presentation. All our pledge of allegiance to the country, may you be.
Father God, thank you for today. Thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for our city and that we get to get together and govern ourselves. Please give us wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions that affect all of the citizens of Winter Garden. Watch over our staff and our first responders.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone here to the city. First on the agenda tonight is approval of the amendment from our meeting of October the 27th. They have been distributed. Are there any additions, additions or corrections? Hearing done, we need a motion. The motion will prove we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. First reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance, ordinance 22-44.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 22-44, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida submitting to the electors of Winter Garden, a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Winter Garden, authorizing the city commission to determine whether the city manager is required to be a resident of the city, providing a ballot title summary and text for the proposed amendment, providing directions to the city clerk and providing for conflicts and severability and effective date for the amendment if approved and effective date for the ordinance.
Thank you. State court.
Uh, yes, sir. Good evening, mayor commissioners. The, on April 14th of 2022, motion was made to extend residency requirements for the city manager through, uh, March of the 2023. This was approved by the city commission with the intent that the city would submit a question to the electorate on March 14th of 2023 on the ballot. The question addresses whether the city should remove the residency requirement as noted under section, subsection 28 of the city's charter and give the discretion to the city commission. This ordinance contains the language that was crafted for that ballot question. A second reading would be scheduled and public hearing would be scheduled for January 12th of 2022, and I'd be happy to answer your questions. 2023. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission?
No, it's about those who want to start the motion back last April. It makes sense. This is, uh, there's no other city position that has a residency requirement. Uh, this is kind of a holdover from many decades ago when community communities have, uh, civilly made changes over the years. So if we can be in line with the younger communities and continue to allow us to, uh, accommodate the needs of our talent within the city staff.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak.
Fretchenhope, Budfelford, like you at Winter Garden. I approve of this change, but I was made aware Tuesday that anybody that wants to be on any committee, as long as they apply and are approved by the commission, can do it. We have an opening on the pension board. And it came to my attention that if somebody from Ocoee wished to be on the pension board, there's no requirement for living in Winter Garden. And if one of you would approve it and suggest it, if they could be on, and I think that, well, the city manager's job is certainly different than some of these boards, and I approve of the change for the city commissioner. Maybe we better look at the rest of the boards. I'm just, just off the cap, would you like Ocoee to be telling us what we're doing? That's maybe a little lepity, but I was quite regasted.
We might write a note back commission out of office.
So just as a point of interest.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
We approve ordinance 22-44 with the second public reading in hearing January 12th of 2022.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Next we'll have a second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinances, ordinance 22-37, 22-38, and 22-39.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 22-37, ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately 0.71 plus minus acres located at 958 Tillaville School Road, west of Tillaville School Road, east of Lake Brim Drive, south of Civitas Way, and north of Brick Road into the city of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction over said property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance 22-38, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden Convergence Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately 0.71 plus minus acres located at 958 Tillaville School Road, west of Tillaville School Road, east of Lake Brim Drive, south of Civitas Way and north of Brick Road from Orange County Lodensky Residential to City Lodensi Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance 22-39, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning approximately 0.71 plus minus acres located at 958 Tillaville School Road, west of Tillaville School Road, east of Lake Brim Drive, south of Civitas Way and north of Brick Road from Orange County A-1 Citrus Rural District to City R-1 Single Family Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. Um, this is a voluntary annexation of the property at 958 Tillaville School Road. The change to the future land use will go from Orange County Lodensi to City Lodensi Residential is changing, as well as changing the zoning from A1 in the county to R1 in the city. Uh, after our last meeting, we've had some discussions with them. They are going to, they, they've got to reduce the easement on the backs where the sanitary and utility lines will come in. They will also build a water holding or pond in the back to make sure there's no water draining onto other areas. And we've had discussions with them about, um, also agreeing not to build any vertical construction within that area. So it'd be about 20 to 25 feet. Um, we'd have to figure it out as it's going through the process. But that would be keeping away from the neighbors to the west. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance 22-37, 22-38, and 22-39.
Questions from the commission?
Yeah, I'll start this. So, uh, the annexation is good work and certainly favorable to the annexation of the Tillaville School Road district there. However, uh, the applicant has already advised that the, the goal is to annex it and then split the lot. And I, there is where I have some concerns. Splitting the lot, the lot conformed to R1, which we call a variance, is also not consistent use with the other homes that are on Tillaville School Road. The homes to both, uh, north, south, and east, which is where the house would face, are all larger homes on large lots that have been there for a number of years. Just to break that up and, and break the whole visual line of that. As such, and I'll, I'll do discussion also before we type motion, my, my direction would be to move this to a date to be determined so that we can continue to work with the, uh, property owners, see if we can come up with a resolution that will work favorably to everybody.
I guess I look at this in total because I'm a low-density R1 person and typically in R1 and state crafting, the home is around three units per acre. They can say four, I think, it seems like they end up with around.
Most, most RPs actually line up with two or two and a half.
But a typical R, you know, R1, uh, that we did, you know, in downtown area, and this is three quarters of a acre.
Yeah.
So you putting two on there, in essence, meets the, uh, technical side, I think, of, of the R1. The variances is a different story, but from that side, I don't know if it meets it.
It does, sir. In that case, it, it tends to be, in this case, it's a very deep lot, but, uh, but from a width perspective.
Eighty feet, I believe.
Yeah.
Eighty-five. Well, eighty-five is the minimum lot with required for R1.
Yeah.
This lot split would create two lots that are approximately 81 feet wide by 185 to 190 feet deep, which exceeds the minimum lot depth of 100 feet.
Yeah, so I, so I agree with you on that point. It's a good point.
Yeah, technically, I agree that it's short and you have to have a variance, but, uh, you know, it's, it's not a 40-foot width lot.
When I look at the other homes, you go on that, up and down that neighborhood, you're just nothing close there because they're all in.
Yeah, the, the one that's next to it is South Lake Apocry, that used to be their office and, you know, and then the neighbor, I think, uh, to the south was okay with what I understand.
The neighbor, to, the, the two neighbors to the south are part of Oakland Park. They're across the trail. Nobody, they've not said anything. The neighbor to the north, uh, came to the meeting and I talked to him about the drainage was his, was his concern. And he's got no concerns as long as that's.
You know, the owner property is, is that business that sits right next to the butterfly garden.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, usually, yeah, South Lake.
Matthews family.
Yeah, so that was sort of. My desire is to definitely resolve that before we move forward.
Any other questions from the commission? No, this is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
I went to motion, we're going to 22-37, 22-38, and 22-39. To delay that for time to be determined, force to go back and speak with the, uh, the property owner and see if we can resolve the R1, uh, question.
Do we have a second?
So none of the adjacent property owners have been against it?
None, none of them are against it. Um, when it went to planning board, a couple of the property owners within Oakland Park showed up to the meeting and they were concerned about drainage without being answered.
I never take you sit just because people didn't show up.
So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. If not, then the motion dies in a second. Do we have any other motion? Is the applicant here?
There is a person who is part of the applicant.
He wish to speak?
I don't think I can add anything. I'll leave it up to the commission. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 22-37, 22-38, and 22-39. The staff will adjourn.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Just a little surprised by, I mean, this is something that's put in the district. Respect that. Give us opportunity to discuss that. Disappointed that we were doing this.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye. Aye opposed? Aye. Motion carried forward. Resolution 22-11.
Yes, sir. Resolution 22-11, a resolution of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, authorizing the city manager to apply for up to a $3,500,000 loan under the state revolving fund loan program to fund the city's design and the city's Crest Avenue WWTF or wastewater treatment facility, capacity expansion and process optimization project, and the cost of debt issuance. And if such loan application is approved, authorizing the execution and delivery of the loan agreement, note and related closing documents. Such loan would pledge water and sewer system revenues and shall not pledge ad lorem taxes will be a general obligation debt, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. The city submitted a request for inclusion in the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to receive a planning and design loan for the Crest Avenue wastewater treatment facility, capacity expansion, and process optimization project. DEP has notified us that the project has been placed on the priority list and is eligible to receive a design loan of up to a maximum amount of $4,500,000. Resolution 22-11 allows the city manager to apply for that loan, execute the loan agreement if approved, and pledges water and sewer system revenues for repayment of the loan. Repayment of the loan would begin nine months after design is complete, and the interest rate on the loan is based on the weekly average yield of the bond buyer index as well as the 2020 census data, which has been trending at 1%. Staff would recommend approval of resolution 22-11, which also requires the city manager to apply, execute, recruit, and pledge water and sewer system revenues for a state revolving fund loan for the design of the Crest wastewater treatment facility, capacity expansion, and process optimization project in the amount of $3,500,000.
Questions from the commission?
Uh, I guess a couple. I'm not going to get into a lot of questions here tonight, but just, just a couple. You said the interest rate right now is one, but I think in this, you put in 1.5%, is that correct?
Yeah, I do have Murray Hamilton with, uh, Raftell's, our consultant, who can talk.
Answer questions?
Yeah. Try staying my lane here.
Mr. Mayor, again, for the record, my name is Murray Hamilton. I'm a senior manager and certified public accountant with Raftell's. Again, we're a utility rate financial consulting firm, and we were part of the team that presented to you, uh, back in May when the capital funding plan was put into place. Yes, sir.
So I guess first, uh, we were talking about, first being 1% or under 1% now, if you just put in 1.5% for the projections. Then there was like a 2% as a origination fee, a sub-fee.
There, there, yes, sir.
Oh, there's 160,000 or something like that.
There's, there, there's an administrative fee of 2% that, that, you know, goes with the program. The interest rate we used was 1.5%. I, I, from the, the current rates for a state revolving fund loan on the wastewater side today is less than half a percent. Um, that, that, that's what the rates are currently. Obviously, the interest, interest rates are moving. We try to be conservative. We, we estimate it at 1.5%. Uh, hopefully, that's a little high.
Yeah, and I'll probably ask this question back later. When do we lock in the interest rate?
Okay, so, so the stated rules at, at, at the state level state that the interest rate is typically open until the project is actually complete. But I will say that that's in conflict with most of the, uh, SRF loans that I've seen being executed here over the last couple of years is, is they've been affirmed stated rate of interest at the time that the loans are executed.
Okay, because this, you know, two, three-year project, you know, like open-ended, uh, you know, interest rates, okay. On the, when we got to the impact fees, oh, let me read this. The impact fees, um, it was based on 200. New, but when you look at this, if you go from year 25 to 26, you know, we're almost doubling the, uh, the revenue. So we're averaging 200, and that's anticipating a higher, uh, impact fee rate then at that time.
A, a connection rate. So, so what I had referenced in the footnote was actually annual average growth rate.
But it's, yeah, but it's 200 per year.
Yeah, per, 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 per year. It, it is an annual average. So the first, so one of the things we saw during fiscal year 2022 was a slowdown in the actual connections. So one of the changes, one of the updates we made from our May presentation to what's included in this loan application, again, to be conservative, is we backed off of our growth assumption for new connections. It's just under 1% a year, which, uh, Mr. Mayor, is about 140 connections per year.
Okay.
Now, and we did that for the first three years of this six-year forecast period. So you're correct. When you get to about 2026, I think it is, we went back to our historical level, which is just above 1%, which is about 250 connections per year. The annual average is 200.
Okay, I understand that. Uh, operating expenses from '22 to '23 jumped about two and a half million. I assume that's with the debt service, the interest plus depreciation?
Well, depreciation's not included.
That's included in that.
Right. What, what's included there, uh, Mr. Mayor, is, so in our analysis with staff, we updated the May presentation that we gave you a few, a few months ago to account for actual events that occurred through the end of fiscal year. One of those is revenues. Okay, new connections were less than what we were anticipating, but revenues were a little stronger by about $400,000 for the year. On the opposite side of the equation, actual operating expenses for the year were, were significantly less than budget. That's predominantly due to appropriated but unfilled staffing positions. That, that's the main reason we spent less, less than our operating budget. And, and in putting together the fiscal year 2023 budget, there were several key areas of cost increases. One was on the personnel and benefit side. The city revamped its, its benefit program in part to retain existing staff, but to try and fill some of those unfilled positions. And so you're, you're actually seeing kind of a check mark between what you actually spent in 2022 and the appropriations for 2023. The other areas that had significant cost increases in the 2023 budget was repairs and maintenance, contract services, uh, a- as well as, uh, operating supplies and fuel. Uh, so, so again, that was, uh, city staff's, uh, best efforts, uh, to, to try and, and appropriate it at the right level. Um, I would tell you in, in practice, I suspect you're going to perform a little better in fiscal year 2023 than what the budget is laid out. We're not going to fill those positions as quickly as we think. And again, our goal here is we're putting together a loan document, so we're, we're, we're trying to be conservative. Obviously, in the few, at a future date, well, the rate path that's included in the loan, uh, agreement or, or loan application, again, I would call it a rate path. It's an estimate based on the engineering estimates that we have at this point in time. Uh, this first step is to approve the design loan that will hopefully set us in the right direction to figure out what the ultimate costs are going to be. And I suspect that a later date at, at staff's direction, we'll come back and actually have a more formal discussion about what a, what an actual rate increase might look like.
When we look at our, our revenue, uh, that's available, um, I think there's two lines. One was excluding impact fees, one was including the impact fees. When you look at the excluding impact fees, next year is a deficit.
Yes.
And that always raises, I think, a concern from my perspective. So how comfortable are you, the city, or we should be in recognizing that that's going to turn around? Because it turns around quickly and gets up to over $2 million then, you know, in two years.
It, it, it does. And again, I, I want to highlight the principal driver of that is the appropriate level of the 2023 budget. The, comparing 2022 appropriations to 23, the step increase was $1.4 million, which is well in excess of that deficiency, Mr. Mayor. Now, for the state revolving fund loan, uh, the pledge of revenues are operating as well as impact fees. The reason I showed just the operating only was really to provide full disclosure to, to the state revolving fund loan. Again, I, I would surmise, based on my experience with the city, which is, is more than 15 years at this point, I think you're going to perform better than you did, uh, or that the appropriate budget shows for fiscal year 2023. And I don't think you're necessarily going to realize the deficiency that's shown in the loan application.
Yeah, because even with impact fees, it's still quote marginal. I just didn't want to start off, and I don't know what the loan covinths are going to be, but, you know, certainly, it's not going to be a deficit that they're going to.
No, no.
I didn't want to start off, you know, in violation of some code.
Yes, sir. And, and this demonstrates that you're not violating, you're not, you're not in violation because impact fees are also a pledge for repayment of the loan.
But it's a small margin.
I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Mayor. On the, on the other side of the equation, since, since we're talking about financial position, we're going into the current fiscal year with $17 million in operating reserves. Okay, so, so again, another strong point, which is one of the reasons we have the, whatever the rate adjustments are going to be at the finalized, uh, final design cost of that plant, the reserves are going to assist the city with helping to phase in whatever that rate path is hopefully going to look like. So I, I do, I do want to highlight that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What is the APY when we figure out what the APR and various administrative fees and other fees associated with this one? Okay, well, again, the administrative charging is 2%. And that, and that's typically made, uh, I think at the first payment. So, so it's, it's not necessarily amortized.
It's blue.
And again, we've assumed a 1.5% uh, interest rate at this point.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, we need a motion.
Move to approve resolution 22-11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation approved, change order for task order for one. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a request to, um, add a change order to the construction manager risk services contract for the, uh, Crest Avenue wastewater treatment facility upgrades to Atkins. Uh, we have completed our negotiations with Atkins for the upgrades. Uh, we've modified four tasks that are listed here, funding and finance support, permitting services, final design, and bidding services and C-MAR coordination. Uh, this is all to assist with the contractor coming onboard to do the, uh, the C-MAR process that we, when we selected in previously. Staff would recommend approving the change order for task order number one, pre-construction services with Atkins in the amount of $485,196. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the change order for task order one, construction manager at risk to Atkins for $485,196.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Another change order. Go ahead, sir.
Actually, this is a purchase order for
Purchase order, excuse me.
Construction managers at risk that we selected for the Crest Avenue wastewater treatment facility upgrades, uh, to Wharton Smith, Inc. Staff has completed negotiations for the C-MAR task order one, pre-construction services with Wharton Smith for the upgrades to the Crest wastewater treatment facility. The purchase order includes pre-construction management, coordination of meetings, preliminary cost estimates, design and constructibility review, value engineering, schedule development, bidding, procurement, and guaranteed max price development. Staff would recommend approving the purchase order for task order number one, pre-construction services with Wharton Smith, Inc. in the amount of $398,558. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase order for construction manager, um, at risk services to Wharton Smith for $398,558.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve purchasing one new street sweeper.
Yes. Good evening, mayor commissioners. Request approval for purchase of new Elgin Brew Bear Street Sweeper from Environmental Products Group. Purchase is a biggie back of the source of cooperative purchase contract. This will be a 2024 freightliner. Purchase amount is $302,594.80. This replaces a 2008 model sweeper that's 14 years old. Delivery of this unit is September of next year. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah.
That's actually pretty quick.
Yeah. We, we were learning that.
Questions from the commission?
Funny because I just had a resident asking when we're going to get a new street cleaner instead of pushing from the side out to the middle of the road.
We need all the lights out.
We, we definitely.
We need a motion.
Move to approve purchase of a new street sweeper for 3025948.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation declared being equipment is surplus. Yes, sir.
So, uh, this is a request to, uh, dispose of some surplus vehicles and equipment. You have an attached list. These vehicles are basically no longer functional or, functional or usable to us and request permission to dispose of.
Questions from the commission? Questions from the commission? We definitely keep stuff alive. We need a motion.
Move to approve disposal vehicles and surplus auction.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve two new rescue ambulances.
Okay, so this request is to approve issue of purchase orders for two new rescue ambulances from Ref. Technical Center. This purchase is piggybacking the Forested Vehicles Association contract. Cost of the units is $339,480 each. Funding was provided in the fiscal year '22 budget for one of the units and am requesting to issue a purchase order for the second unit contingent upon funding in the fiscal year '24 budget. One of the reasonings for this request is that delivery of these units would not be till mid-2025 or quoting 28 to 30 months lead time right now on these units. There was also a delay in being able to present this because pricing was not available for chassis that far out. So we're finally getting the ability to even order the one that we budgeted in '22 for the '22 budget.
And the purpose of ambulance is to get there fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't supply the lights.
Well, I guess the question, and Chief, you know, it's going to take us this long to get it. And when you look at the age of some of our vehicles and mileage on, and now we're going from just being a person's fonder to the transporter, are we comfortable? I mean.
So we actually have one unit that we ordered in November of '20.
Right.
That is going to be delivered the first quarter this coming year. It's in production as we speak. And then these anticipated trucks are, we're going to be fairly comfortable. I mean, by getting this replaced and in place, part of this is, one of these units is for Fire Station 21, which the building's not even built yet. So I'm trying to anticipate our need down the road, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
You've already convinced him, see?
Yeah. And based on that, that's what we're trying to do, is anticipate this need.
Yeah. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Very good.
Mayor, acquisition for property located in 173 10th Street. Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. This one is a very small parcel, about 2,500 square feet. If you look at the location map, you'll see why we're interested in it. Its location gives it a great deal of holdup power on the rest of the project. The corner of Central and 10th is a very important area for the redevelopment plans, and it's critical that we get this piece. The owner, Vanny McRoy Holmes, was not enthused about selling it to us. It has been in her family for over 100 years. Her aunt, her Agurtha, had purchased, well, first, Agurtha Marion was born in 1898 in Apopla, and she moved to Winter Garden in around 1920 and purchased this with some other properties. She opened Marion's Room and Restaurant. She had boarding house and a restaurant. And the black baseball players that were here on spring training typically stayed there. She transferred the property later on to her nieces. And now, the current owner obviously was reluctant to sell to us, but did eventually agree to go along with the program. The property has picnic table and cover on it and is fenced in. She asked that we relocate that picnic table, that covered picnic table, to one of the parks and could we put a plaque honoring her rent? And I said, of course, the city would be more than happy to do that. So she has agreed to sell it to us, and we would recommend that you support this.
You're going to put a plaque where the table moved to? You're going to put it in a plaque where the property is?
She wants it on the table at the other park we relocate the table to.
Okay.
And as a side note, there's a great article in The Observer, January 21 of 2021, about her family. One of her nephews was our first black police officer from that area, Mr. King. And their family, I think that was part of it too, is her family always had a stated family goal of service to the community, and that's why I think she was finally willing to sell.
Maybe when we do the plaque, we can do something with the history. I'd like to see more of that. A little bit of that history that you just mentioned.
I'll see if I can get the permission of The Observer to let us copy some of their stuff because they went into a great deal of depth.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Williams? Does he have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of 173 10th Street from Vanny McRoy Holmes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Pre-site plan for 805 Mary's Park Place. Yes, sir.
This is the site plan review for the property at 805 Mary's Park Place. The owner requests approval to construct a new 9,750 square foot warehouse building that's consistent with the surrounding area, and it's actually an expansion to an existing building. Proposed development includes parking and landscaping. Plans have been reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee, and staff will recommend approval subject to DRC conditions. We have to answer questions.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Take double your space. We need a motion.
Move to approve the site plan for Mary's Park Place.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve site plan for 21 West Smith Street.
This is the site plan for 21 West Smith Street? Miss Smith Street? The owner proposing to build a 4,160 square foot office building with associated site improvements. They'll also build on-street parking in front of their building as well as the neighboring building to the north. There'll be six spaces there. Elevations have already been reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Board, and plans have been reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee. Staff will recommend approval subject to those conditions.
Is this building going to resemble or would close to the building that is just north of them there? It's a great building.
It does resemble it, although it's got different features on the facility.
Right, but I mean, it's going to blend in because that's still a heavily, you know, neighborhood there.
Yes.
It's small.
It's a single story, similar in size.
Yeah. Okay, so it will blend in to the end like with that. Okay. Questions from the commission? And I assume none of the neighbors have any issues. Okay? We need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan for 21 West Smith Street.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve site plan for 1680 Marcel Drive.
Site plan for 1680 Marcel Drive. The owner's proposing to build a 19,312 square foot medical office building with associated site improvements. And the plans have been reviewed and approved by DRC, and staff will recommend approval subject to those conditions.
Questions from the commission? We need a motion?
Move to approve the site plan for 1680 Marcel Drive.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Site plan for 12324 West Colony. Is he a man?
Site plan is for 12324 West Colonial Drive. The owner's proposing to build a 3,000 square foot commercial building with parking and landscaping. I was asked a question earlier about the parking. Yes, the handicap space is counted towards the minimums. So they have the required parking spaces. Plans have been reviewed and approved by DRC. And again, staff will recommend approval subject to those conditions.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Small.
Yeah. We need a motion?
Motion to approve site plan at 12324 West Colonial Drive.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve site plan for 1577 and 894 Beard Road.
This is the final plat for 1577.
Because it's built.
It is built and it's finished right before Thanksgiving. And so this was supposed to be on our last agenda, and obviously it was canceled because of the hurricane. So anyway, this is the final plat for 1577 and 894 Beard Road. This plat creates two lots as well as all the associated easements for ponds and utilities and access. Plat has been reviewed and approved by DRC. Staff will recommend approval.
Turnout looks pretty nice. It does, I did it when you go by there.
You got all the offsites done?
Everything is done, 100% done.
Okay. We need a motion?
Move to approve the final plat for 1577 and 894 Beard Road.
We have a second? Motion is second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Pro file plat for 999 Tillan Oaks Trail.
File plat for 999 Tillan Oaks Trail. This plat contains 10 single-family lots, a common area, and tracks for roadways. And it is actually the last park of Oakland Park within Winter Garden. These lots are consistent with the approved PUD ordinance, and they've been approved by DRC. So staff will recommend approval of the plat.
Ten homes are about five acres.
Yes, and these are large lots in Oakland Park.
Yeah. Okay. Questions from the commission? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the final plat for 999 Tillan Oaks Trail.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve special event.
Fourth Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. Special event request to hold the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. It will be downtown on Monday, January 16, 2023. Parade goes from the corner of Dillard headed west on Plant Street to Highland where it loops around and goes back to the pavilion. And a celebration will be held at the pavilion. This event is held from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And it starts set up at 8:00 a.m. And should be turned down by 5:00 p.m. It also includes crafts, food, various vendors, as well as live music. Staff will recommend approval.
Several flash.
So. Did they request warmer weather this year, Stephen? I think they're hoping for that.
Any questions?
We're going to miss Anthony this year.
There's a tribute to him as well.
Yeah, going to miss him. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special event. Fourth Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. More appointments? Mayor, please, I would like to request you to continue on his OP and queue to the Jan. Word 12 Commission. Okay. I'll get a motion done after that. So move? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam, citizens of Winter Garden.
I'm having to come up in the first meeting in November, which was canceled. It is my understanding it's a volunteer group that does Halloween decorations at Bradford Park. If you haven't seen them, they are fantastic. I walk my dog there every morning and every day. There'd be something new. And one day, I knew somebody's dog was loose. It was so real. And it was a skeleton. I didn't realize it was a skeleton till the next day when there was a man with a leash holding the dog. It is fantastic. It's a volunteer group. They sneak over in the evening, and it's there. The city allows them to put lights on, and it is fantastic. The golf carters found it. And what a wonderful treat for the city that people do out of the kindness of their hearts. Thanks for letting them do it. This proves we are. It's great, just super.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Mr. Arndman, Mr. Mash, Mr. Williams. Tonight, I want to talk about equity. I want to talk about two holiday events, and I want to get some questions answered that the city still has not answered satisfactorily. On December 1, the city emailed its December E newsletter highlighting holiday events to residents, and it included a link to the Tis the Season 2022 event flyer. This flyer is also pasted on Placards Line and Plant Street, and I've seen it posted in shop windows. I've seen people taking pictures of it for future reference. This is the main event flyer for the seasonal festivities. The E News newsletter and the flyer were featured in the city's, featured the city's marquee event, Light Up Winter Garden. The flyer noted it's, uh, partly sponsored by the West Orange Ministerial Association. The flyer also mentioned, uh, horse-drawn carriage rides fifteen times, the, uh, Merry Winter Garden light show nine times. What it did not mention was the single Jewish event taking place on December nineteenth, the menorah lighting that's being, and the Hanukkah celebration being sponsored by, uh, Chabad of South Orlando. Now, it is on the city's website, but it was not on the promotional materials that were blasted out to residents and that are out in the city for all the residents to see. Now, the reason that the city manager, Mr. Williams, gave me for the omission is that the menorah lighting is a religious event. I'm sorry, but to borrow phrase from a former employer who was a Texan, but that dog doesn't ain't gonna hunt. I want to talk about Let's Light Up, or Light Up Winter Garden. This featured Bible verses, prayers, and religious music. It also featured, uh, commentary by, uh, church leaders from around the area. By any measure, the portion organized by the West Orange Ministerial Association is a religious event. So let's look at the menorah lighting and Light Up Winter Garden, both events together. They're both holiday events, they both take place in downtown Winter Garden, they're both organized by outside entities, the city wasn't involved in either of them, and neither of them are funded by taxpayers. Light Up Winter Garden received city promotion, but the Hanukkah event did not. This is not a one-time slip-up. I had the city poll, the last three years of flyers and Chabad events were not listed on those. When I asked for further clarification about why, I was directed back to Chabad. It is not for Chabad to answer for why the city, which is promoting Christmas, Christmas events, why the city is not promoting Hanukkah event. For the record, I will state that Chabad appears very happy with the city of Winter Garden. And when I spoke to Chabad, I was told that they are very happy with Winter Garden. I'm not here on behalf of Chabad, I'm here on behalf of the people of Winter Garden who might want to attend this event and might want to know when it, when it's happening. This is about equity and inclusion. Why is the city promoting one religious event, but not another religious event? And that is a question that I have asked, and I have not gotten any answer to. Question? No, I'm going to insist on an answer, because I have been getting around and around and around on this, and there is still time...
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
There's still time before Hanukkah to fix this, so that people know that this is happening.
Send, thank you. Anyone else? Have a, yes.
I guess I'll follow. It's just a week before Hanukkah, and I want to take the opportunity to thank the city for allowing the Hanukkah menorah lighting. That really means a lot to so many of the residents. We're here every week, in Winter Garden, because we have Hebrew school here, uh, so we interact with a lot of people, and, um, as the woman just recently mentioned, that we do greatly appreciate the city, and that's for the ones that we've been in contact with, um, the city manager and, uh, the others who have been, uh, very gracious to give time for community to get together for Hanukkah. Regarding the issue that she brought up, I guess I'll leave it, as she said, between the, the, the city commission and the, and the people of the city. We have no objection, of course, uh, if it would be listed, no objection to that at all, um, but we just want, I just came here today simply, I didn't know she was gonna say something about it, but I came just to simply say thank you, and, uh, it really means a lot to us, and if you look at the faces of the people that are there, everyone's smiling and happy, and people are so, uh, grateful that, that, uh, they're included and they're able to celebrate right on Plant Street, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello? Say a couple words here, my name is Zach Wachler, uh, the two-two-seven Timber Creek Pine Circle. You'll see a lot of them that I know. Uh, I wrote this down, because I don't know if I can keep it under three minutes, I don't have one minute, so I'm gonna be a little bit quicker, but, um, I am very proud to call Winter Garden my home. Uh, living within a golf carts right away from Plant Street has been incredible, and it couldn't have been more evident this weekend. Light Up Winter Garden was a success. It's very simple. From the lighting to Christmas tree, to the Christmas market, to the almost two hundred participating golf carts in the parade. All I can say is, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you to the hard-working members of the staff of the city. I know they put in countless hours, I saw them out in the mornings, I saw them out at night. It was awesome to see how much work was put into it. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, thank you to our fire and our police departments for keeping everyone safe. I think, uh, in this day and age, we forget to thank the police, and, and I think that's very important. Um, so thank you again for your commitment to this great event. I hope you continue it every year. My, my four-month-old daughter loved it. Um, when she's a year and a half, I think she's gonna understand a little bit more, but, uh, I'm really looking forward to it next year, so, hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, and thank you again, you guys are the best.
Thank you.
Manager of my city attorney. Pass, there, thank you. City manager.
Good evening, Mayor. I'd just shared a little bit of fun facts, uh, related to, uh, Tis the Season that just kicked off last week, as we've mentioned earlier. Uh, certainly want to take this opportunity to recognize all of our, all of our Parks and Rec staff, Public Works, staff, all of our staff that came together, uh, to finalize the decorations and to ensure, uh, that, uh, Light Up, uh, kicked off Friday on time, but, uh, we estimated that we had roughly ninety-three-plus-thousand folks, uh, beginning Friday, uh, and had followed through with Saturday, uh, and the entire weekend. Uh, we had a blow over forty-six tons of snow, uh, that we put out for two snow slides and new to the area this year was a winter warm land stage on Main Street, two photo locations. Uh, we added some, uh, garland out front, a large wreath, uh, wreath, uh, or sit at the entrance to see all ten-foot point, set a tree, uh, in front of the parking lot entrance, and two eight-foot out front as well. Uh, just a few facts, and there's a ton more that, uh, are, are, with the, the information that I've distributed, but, uh, it was a very successful event, and again, certainly want to commend all of our staff, uh, that came together to make that a reality. Uh, and with that, this is our, our last mission meeting for the year, so certainly I wish you and all of our residents and our employees a very Merry Christmas.
That's a lot faster than the ball, though.
It's a powerful one.
I'm telling you.
No powerful.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ben.
I echo what Mike said, um, thanking staff and police and fire for all their hard work. They did their regular jobs, and, and they put on this huge event and kept us all safe. Um, one thing I did want to bring up, that is, you know, the end of the year, is, um, I think for my district, we've all seen several, and I wrote it down, so I didn't misspeak. Several of our older homes in the residential area, surrounding downtown, demolished and rebuilt, which is changing character of the area. I've been getting phone calls and visits about it. We have more individual investors purchasing in this area, not so much developers on some of the other districts, so I think the issue impacts us more, perhaps. In an effort to preserve the character and protect the charm of the residential areas surrounding downtown, I would like the city manager to revisit the draft ordinance to establish a downtown residential overlay district, or research existing code for modification, which would place a size restriction on residential buildings within the downtown residential district to protect the special charm that is district lung. One thought, for example, would be if a single-story home is taken down, a single-story home needs to go back, it doesn't overwhelm the neighboring homes. Another thought was to give incentives for the older homes to be saved and remodeled and upgraded, or even added onto within guidelines of the code ordinance. I know it's delicate balance between property rights and preservation of our charm, but I do believe here at Crossroads, in action, it's to be taken. Thank you.
Any objections from the commission for, I think we had started that, we had a rap at one time, so, goes a rapid that, and going back through that again? Okay. Okay.
Oh, and so you passed.
No, I was waiting on, uh, Commissioner Minz, if she had anything else.
No, that was it.
Okay. Commissioner Mew?
Pass.
Pass? Commissioner Maden?
Just very quickly to address what Mr. Watkins said, I just, so long, Claire Kirk, so, when we advertised, and first of all, we have any religious, uh, annotations or on the events that we have going on in Winter Garden for Christmas?
No.
Okay, so that is the policy, we're gonna advertise events, but they're not gonna have any religious ads. I mean, we certainly want to be inclusive, I mean, if, if anybody has anything they want to present to the city, we always encourage them to come to the city and do that, and I don't think we've ever refused anybody, you know, whether it's support or anything like that, correct?
Okay.
Okay, that being said, um, I want to thank staff for a wonderful light up, and I, I say this, um, and Laura Carden, probably still got a little bit of communist thunder here too, it's, it is amazing what they do, and what the Rec Department does, what staff does, I mean, the word that comes to mind is world-class. I don't know where you get the accent, I don't know if everybody noticed, the folks walking around on stilts, I mean, these are like Disney professional, top-grade Disney performers out there entertaining the crowds, I mean, it was just absolutely amazing, so please pass on the, the thanks, and a very Merry Christmas for our entire staff. Thank you.
So we know that the Recreation Department is happy that that has been a silverware, but they put a lot of effort into it, but we also had eighty-five volunteers that helped volunteer to make it happen, and it wouldn't happen without those volunteers, so they need to get some recognition too. Uh, thank you for putting this together, this is really good, so we can just add on and add on. And then our city manager's gonna take a little break vacation before, so he'll be back in next year? All right.
No.
That's all I have here.
Thank you. Echo that, I do want to thank all of our city staff, it was a magical, uh, weekend, um, but talking with them, uh, later, their Saturday night stuff, they, they're still smiling and working hard, but I know they like you all, and, uh, but we do thank you all for everything that you've all do for this city, and, uh, we wish everybody nothing but the best, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and Happy Hype, and we just hope everyone stays blessed and their families. I'd eat around all the tables at the luncheon, um, unfortunately, tell everybody thank you, but I want to make sure that, uh, all of our employees know how much the city commission, as a commission and as residents of Winter Garden appreciate all this stuff. So thank you, with that, we'll adjourn until next year.